We'd like to call the meeting order. Roll call.
Ms. Duroff. Mrs. Kratz, here. Ms. Nyman.
Here.
Mrs. Scott.
Here.
Mr. Brad Updegrove.
Here.
Mr. Roger Updegrove.
Here.
Mr. Zawada.
Here.
Mr. Brophy.
Here.
Mr. Panarello.
Here.
All present.
Please stand for the pledge of allegiance and a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with a vision of justice for all.
So, good evening, everyone, and I'd like to welcome those members from the Boyertown School Community that are here this evening and that may be watching virtually this evening. My name is Dr. Scott David Heiser, Superintendent of Schools here in Boyertown Area School District, and we have the pleasure this evening of recognizing our school board members as the Pennsylvania School Board Association commits to annually, January is Board Recognition Month. So I'd like to just share a few things with regard to our board and its recognition. School board service has long been a crucial part of our nation's legacy and its commitment to public education. The consummate school director is described as an ethical, principled individual with a deep desire to serve. They believe in the value of our public schools and local control of public education for the benefit of all students. Today, school districts are expected to offer more services along with world-class instruction with sometimes limited resources. These expectations provide a tremendous challenge for school directors, unpaid volunteers who give of their time to contribute to the schools and communities they serve. Our schools and educators' continued efforts to provide high-quality, continuous education to all students further highlights the key role school directors play in educating our children. It gives me great pleasure this evening in recognizing the Boyertown Area School District directors who give unselfishly of their time and energies to support and guide our schools and the students they serve. Their efforts reflect the mission of our schools, to provide opportunities for success for every one of our students. This evening, this district would like to share a small token of appreciation with our board members. As I reached out to Mr. Sparks, the high school principal, this month, he in turn reached out to Mr. Fernsy, who has been an art teacher at BASH for 15 years. Mr. Fernsy currently teaches Introduction, Intermediate, and Advanced Ceramics and has an Art Home Room Advisory. He's tasked his Intermediate Ceramics class as well as two additional students, both of whom are here this evening, Julia Berger and Aiden Lacock, to create pieces of artwork for our School Board Appreciation Month. At this time, I'd like to invite Mr. Sparks to the podium to introduce the students. Mr. Sparks?
All right, thank you, Dr. David Heiser. To clarify, that's Mr. Fernsy who has the class, and this is Aiden Lacock. But I want to echo what Dr. David Heiser said and thank all of you on the school board. You guys give up your Tuesday nights, you go through a lot of tough decisions, and I truly believe you have what's best for our district and our students at your heart. So, thank you again for what you do. As a small token of our appreciation, we reached out to Mr. Fernsy and his Intermediate Ceramics class and asked them to try to find some students to create something as a kind of a heartfelt message and a thank you to all of you. So we did do that tonight. In fact, I'm going to ask Mr. Stout and I to hand out our gift bags that we have to you, and then we're going to come back to the podium here, and I'm going to let our students to, or had a major part of making this happen today, kind of explain the process and the amount of time that it took for them to put this into play. Now, both of these students took the Intro, Intermediate, and Advanced versions of the ceramics course throughout their high school career. As we mentioned, Julia also has the Home Room Advisory period with Mr. Fernsy where she can have additional time for her class. Aiden here, however, gave up his lunch period in order to help make these gifts for you tonight. So again, a tremendous amount of time was given up out of their schedule in what is often seen as one of the most challenging time periods of the school year. They did this after we came back from winter break, during midterms, at the transition of the end of our first semester and the start of our second semester, where we had a four-day weekend and several two-hour delays and other things going on there. So they really, you know, worked against the clock here to make this happen, and I can't, I think you're going to love what you see. So let me go around and hand these out.
Ms. Duroff, thank you for the help and support. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right, so you guys hand them out, okay? Come up front. Grab the one on top first, okay? They're ceramics, I'm telling you now.
No, no returns.
Yeah, not.
He doesn't get to work.
No, he got to.
Thank you.
All right, so as you unwrap your gifts and you look at the ceramic artifacts that were created for you, I'm going to invite our students to the board to explain all the multiple steps that took place to allow these pieces to come to life here. So, students, it's your turn.
All right, thank you. So, when we first started creating these, we kind of, we spent a couple of days and really planned them out. We kind of went through a lot of different ideas and what we wanted to make. So initially, we were like, should we make them all the same, or should we kind of make them personal? So we kind of ended up, we kind of, me and Julia, we took the clay and we threw it on the ceramics wheel, and we just kind of made it different. We kind of gave our own personality to each one, and we tried to make something different for every person. So it's, nothing was the same. I think, then we took them, we took a lot of time, we refined them on the wheel, we made them to look their best before the other classes got to them, and we tried to make them so they would look well and they would work well for people.
And then after the initial piece was created, he wanted it to be collaborative piece, so he gave it to his intermediate classes and his intro classes, and they're the ones who made like the marks that you see on the piece. So they used a bunch of different kind of tools, like forks, spoons, chains, like clothespins, like just, he has like this bucket of things to use. So yeah, each piece is original, and me and Aiden just like went on separate wheels and like kind of banged them out, and just like, we didn't look at each other and we didn't like see what the other was doing. So, yeah, we all put our own personality in it, and then Mr. Fernsy went and picked the glazes, so he dipped them all, and we actually finished it this morning. They came out of the kiln this morning. So, yeah, I got to see them and unload the kiln, and that was really cool to see it come together as a whole process. But yeah, it's a big collaborative piece to just show our appreciation and utilize what we have in this class, so I hope you like them.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sparks, and thank you, students, and congratulations to all of our board members. That takes us down to our student representative report. Liliana and Allison, why don't you share some of the highlights of our school community?
All right, good evening, board members and meeting attendees. We hope everyone had an excellent winter break and enjoyed several snowy days. We are excited to highlight everything that is happening at BASH this month.
We made it through the first half of the year. Both teachers and students have felt the quickening pace of the current school year as well as the halfway mark comes to come close. This also means that there was some very important business to take care of, most notably midterms, one of students' least favorite times of the year. No quizzes, but tests of one's ability to adapt to the learning material they've come to know the past few months. The semester midterm exams took place from Wednesday, January 6th to Thursday, January 16th. Seniors were also able to obtain information about local scholarships through their counselors, bolstering their journey towards higher education. January 17th marked the end of the second marking period in semester, and report cards followed soon after, and students were able to follow their semester two schedules.
Following feedback from Impact Day, Impact Club collaborated with Student Services to collect toiletries and clothing to benefit students in need of support. Anyone who supported the drive received one raffle ticket per item donated. Impact Club collected over 175 items with the winner of the raffle basket as BASH's own Mrs. Benning.
One of the many fun events that took place at BASH in the month of December was the Winter Door Decorating Contest. Throughout the school, there were over 50 different doors and hallways that participated in the contest. In the end, there were 10 winners in total, with the IT department coming out on top.
In other club news, future Business Leaders of America recently participated in their regional conferences. We had an outstanding performance with 40 state qualifiers, including 21 first-place winners. Students who qualified for states will travel to Hershey in early April for the next round of competition.
January was a busy month for Earl students. On January 15th, author Patricia Di Maria, former BAST teacher, visited Earl students to talk about her series of books about a friendly wave called Sudsy Sophie. Students had the opportunity to purchase books and get them signed by the author. On January 12th, the Earl PTO hosted a free bingo night for students and parents, filled with prizes, games, and snacks. In April, Earl will be hosting their book fair and art show, highlighting amazing students' work across the school.
We look forward to bringing you more of BASH's best moments next month. Have a great evening.
There's no one signed up for the public comm period number one, so we'll be looking for the approval of the January 14th, 2025 committee of the whole meeting minutes.
A lot of moves.
Ms. Duroff.
I'm going to abstain. I couldn't hear any of the meeting. I tried being here Zoom, and then on the phone, it was a disaster.
Mrs. Kratz.
Yes.
Ms. Nyman.
No.
Mrs. Scott.
Yes.
Mr. Brad Updegrove.
Yes.
Mr. Roger Updegrove.
Yes.
Mr. Zawada.
Yes.
Mr. Brophy.
Yes.
Mr. Panarello.
Yes.
Motion carries.
We'll also be looking for the approval of the January 21st, 2025 special meeting finance minutes. I'll second.
Ms. Duroff.
No.
Mrs. Kratz.
Yes.
Ms. Nyman.
That was the meeting. I was on Zoom, could not hear, I couldn't talk. Mr. Stout did try to help a little bit. I tried reaching out to Dr. David Heiser, got no response, so, no.
Mrs. Scott.
Yes.
Mr. Brad Updegrove.
Yes.
Mr. Roger Updegrove.
Yes.
Mr. Zawada.
Yes.
Mr. Brophy.
Yes.
Mr. Panarello.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Excuse me, can I say something? I made a mistake holding dates, and I apologize for that. It was the meeting of the 21st of August, and I tried to do Zoom at the dates wrong. So I will abstain from that date. Instead of my, if I can do that.
Yeah.
Thank you.
So what is your vote then for the January 14th meeting?
Yes.
Yes, okay.
Takes us down to discussion. So attached is the January 21st finance presentation, and I wanted to see if the board had any questions, comments, anything in addition to what we presented that it wanted us to respond to or gain some other information for future meeting.
I had a couple of things. On the powers that are featured under contracted services, does that include the 24 positions that we aren't filled, or maybe some of them are filled now? Is that number, that 156, is that 24 included in that as part of the budget? The 156 is the total number of powers that we currently have. It is a to, so. Correct. Okay. So, do we have enough powers then? Are we still looking? We're still looking for powers. Okay. Okay. Also, the 46 subs that we have, is that enough? Is that covering nine buildings? Those are 46 subs that we have working consistently, which means two to three days per week. There's roughly about 60 to 65 subs that may work a daily sub here or there. We continue to work with Kelly Services to recruit additional subs for the district. Okay. All right. Then I had a couple of things. So, the one thing that I would still like to see as part of this budget proposal is, in looking at our class sizes for kindergarten, first, and second, we discussed that before to try to bring that size down, because that definitely increases student achievement in kindergarten, first, and second. And when I briefly looked at what Dr. David Heiser sent me today, and it looked like maybe we might need like three, I like, I'm comfortable around 18. I know that's pushing it a little bit, because that would mean another teacher almost at every, at all six elementaries. But some of those classes that are up at 25, 26, plus you have kids, you know, where our IEPs keep going up, so the teacher has 25 to 26 young children who are still getting used to going to school. And then they have maybe 50% of the class that has, maybe around their 40, 50, that have IEPs that take a lot of time for a teacher, and sometimes takes time away from the teaching. So that's a concern of mine. I would like, you know, administration to look at that and see if there's something more we can do with our budget to include, you know, maybe three more elementary teachers or whatever we need, to sit down and look at it again and see what we might be looking at, even for next year, if the buildings allow it, to have a few more teachers there. Because that's something that our parents have desired for years, and I really would like us to address that in this budget, if we can.
Yeah, we will certainly take a look at that. We do try to be consistent within the K2 realm, and we try to be consistent in the 3-5 realm, and some of those higher numbers are obviously in some of those more upper elementary grades. You bring up a good point. We are at some close numbers in many of our elementary buildings at this point in time. So extending that, so we will project out some things for the board, bring back some other recommendations as to where we could be, and in addition to reducing some sizes along with what is our capacities at some of those buildings to be able to do some of that.
I appreciate that. I just want to emphasize, though, it really does, it really will help our teachers do better with their kids if they have smaller classes. And, you know, it's difficult, it does cost the district money, but in the long run, those children in K1 and 2 are going to be so much better prepared and understand what is required of them in the school environment as they move through the upper elementary grade, so, thank you.
Anything else? Ms. Nyman, you had mentioned, I didn't get back to you, I can't respond to you in the middle of a meeting on the phone and trying to respond, so if you have some things that you'd like to, for me to respond to, or for the administration, we can certainly do that for you.
I would have expected a phone call the next day.
Frankly, I didn't even know you contacted me on my cellphone during the meeting, so.
It was thanks to Mr. Stout.
Okay. Well, if there's things that you would like, please let us know. We're eager to answer any questions that you have.
Treasury Report.
Good evening. Tonight, I will be presenting to you a few highlights from both the November and December 2024 Treasurers Reports. Beginning with November, local revenue delinquent tax collection was approximately $56,489.92. Earned income tax collection was approximately $285,087.13. Transfer tax collection was approximately $156,171.58. And for state revenue, special education subsidy we received was approximately $768,815. Social Security was approximately $460,627.3. And for rental reimbursement subsidy was approximately $214,629.17. And for expenditures in the category of salary benefits and professional services, it accounted for approximately 81% of the monthly expenditures for November. And on to my December report. Delinquent tax collection was approximately $64,446.37. Earned income tax collection was approximately $797,915.73. Transfer tax collection was approximately $265,862.7. And for state revenue, for basic education subsidy, it was approximately $2,806,152. And for retirement subsidy, we received was approximately $1,007,666.37. And also back to expenditures, our category for salaries, benefits, and professional services, it accounted for approximately 79% of the monthly expenditures for December. And that concludes my reports for this evening. Thank you.
And for the board, you'll notice that there's two other, what we're calling general fund snapshots, that we plan to include at every legislative meeting moving forward, obviously, since we haven't had a legislative meeting in quite some time. There are two months worth. It would naturally, in the remaining months, be one month, and it, from my recollection of some past meetings, this was something that was of interest for some board members to see some of the fund balances that exist, to give you an idea and just to give you a snapshot. If the board so chooses to have additional things on there, we'd ask that you please let us know, and we can include some of those things moving forward as well.
So at this time, we'll be looking for an approval for the Treasury Report for November 2024. I'll motion.
Ms. Duroff.
No.
Mrs. Kratz.
Yes.
Ms. Nyman.
Yes.
Mrs. Scott.
Yes.
Mr. Brad Updegrove.
Yes.
Mr. Roger Updegrove.
Yes.
Mr. Zawada.
Yes.
Mr. Brophy.
Yes.
Mr. Panarello.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Now we'll be looking for the approval of the Treasury Report for December 2024. I'll second.
Ms. Duroff.
No.
Mrs. Kratz.
Yes.
Ms. Nyman.
Yes.
Mrs. Scott.
Yes.
Mr. Brad Updegrove.
Yes.
Mr. Roger Updegrove.
Yes.
Mr. Zawada.
Yes.
Mr. Brophy.
Yes.
Mr. Panarello.
Yes.
Motion carries.
It takes us down to the superintendent's report, and we have an itemized agenda. Item A, we have an overnight trip. This is for one teacher and one student who will be attending the Northeast Region Orchestra Festival, so we're seeking approval for these overnight trip, this overnight trip as listed.
I'll second.
Ms. Duroff.
Yes.
Mrs. Kratz.
Yes.
Ms. Nyman. Mrs. Scott.
Yes.
Mr. Brad Updegrove.
Yes.
Mr. Roger Updegrove.
Yes.
Mr. Zawada.
Yes.
Mr. Brophy.
Yes.
Mr. Panarello.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Under Item B, Network and Applications Administrator and Technology Operations Specialist Job Descriptions. These are two new job titles and descriptions that have been with the board for the past six weeks, and we are seeking approval from the board for both the Network and Applications Administrator and Technology Operations Specialist Job Descriptions. And this is a reorganization, again, of the IT department, where we are sunsetting some positions, and as a result, these are some new job descriptions and titles for inside the department.
So they're not new jobs, they're just?
No, they're new job descriptions.
They're just a description of a current job that we already have?
They are descriptions of a job that we do not currently have. That's why we're bringing them to your attention and are seeking board approval for the job titles themselves.
Then you're going to be hiring people.
Not necessarily. Inside the department, we believe we have the two individuals that we are seeking for these positions as we sunset those job descriptions and move those folks into this position, into these positions.
And what is their current rate of pay now compared to what this would be?
Mr. Hahn, you want to update the board on that? And Mr. Fley, why don't you come to the podium, please?
So the one individual is currently making $25.50, they would move to $33. The other individual's making $26.52, and they would move to $34.
Mr. Fley, would you just update again the board? I know you've written to them numerous times in regards to these, and just verbally share a little bit of the reorganization inside the department.
Sure. Due to the loss of two individuals that were part of our infrastructure department, within the IT department, we decided this was an opportunity for us to reimagine the way that we do services. The job descriptions that were in existence were for individuals that had over 10 years of experience, and within an IT field such as ours, we believe that we should be reimagining and seeing how we can do things in a more streamlined and efficient process. By doing that, we collectively generated these two job descriptions, which encapsulate some of what previous employees did and what current employees did to meld into a more efficient way of doing things within our department.
So the two people that you're moving into the positions that left, are you planning on filling the two positions behind them?
No, they would be, they would not be, they would be a loss of headcount, not a loss of headcount, a transitional move. We are expanding upon the skills that those two individuals have and creating a, again, another streamlined process of how we do our work architecturally.
So ultimately, we have any savings, if anything, on this?
At present, we are going to ask that the board allow us to see how our reimagining works, give it three, four months of an opportunity, and then take another look at how we are processing things, and telling whether or not that is the most efficient way possible. I don't want to rush into just filling headcount just to fill headcount. I want to make sure that the department is running in the most efficient manner possible.
Will they, will they have to apply for this job, or are you just going to bring somebody that's already in your department to that job? Must they apply?
My recommendation would be to transition these two individuals to those positions, because I believe their skill set matches exactly what we are looking for.
Are we going to have training for these jobs, and are we going to have cross-training, training, so if somebody else leaves, we'll be able to not have a problem in the department like you do now?
We don't have a problem right now with our department. We do cross-chain our individuals. We cannot foresee all individuals and what their personal ambitions are or personal decisions that lead them in a different direction, but we do cross-train as best as possible with the skill. But we do cross train as best as possible with the skill sets that are available of the individuals that are still here, and the individuals that left. We do as best we can with the resources we have.
No.
Mrs. Kratz?
Yes.
Ms. Nyman?
Yes.
Mrs. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. Brad Updegrove?
Yes.
Mr. Roger Updegrove?
Yes.
Mr. Zawada?
Yes.
Mr. Brophy?
Yes.
Mr. Panarelo?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Under item C, Tax Collectors Compensation. As was presented at the special meeting this past month, and a recommendation from the administration for compensation for tax collectors, it's requirement that every four years, this gets evaluated by the board. So in 2021, this board evaluated, decided not to do anything with moving the rates for tax collectors back in 2000, and previously, as were previously set back in 2017. In 2025, we're tasked with looking at tax collector compensation, the recommendation from administration, doing part, and you see some listing there within there, that their tax collection efforts have really contributed to a 98% collection rate, which is really phenomenal in terms of collection rates. And we are recommending an increase, and you can see those increases from $2 to $2.50 per tax property bill, from $1.35 to $1.50 per capita tax bill, and an additional $0.5 per bill paid if the tax collector utilizes primary bank depository and $750 stipend for office needs annually. We believe this goes a long way in maintaining the collection rates that we're currently seeing, and it's been eight years since any raises were contributed. Now, I'm one that I don't like to bring something forward in a special meeting, and then have it land on a legislative meeting a week later. However, this is a timing thing, from my understanding, and we would not be able to meet the timing necessary if we brought it through both the committee meeting in February, and back through a legislative meeting at the end of next month. Therefore, we are taking the opportunity now to bring this to you. Certainly, Mrs. D'Ancola and myself can answer any questions that you certainly may have. We did have, not have, all members at that special meeting, so it's an opportunity now, if you'd like to ask some particular questions before we move to motion.
Okay, Ms. Diner. I'm looking at the $750 stipend for office needs. What does that entail?
That is just the flat amount that they receive for their office needs. In the past, it has been $500 a year, so this would be increasing by $250 a year for their toner, for their, all of the things they need to issue interim bills and things like that.
We don't bring out the interim bills for them?
We do the regular bills. But they have many other expenditures related to collecting the taxes. That also has not been increased in many years.
Well, I had the same question. The 500's not listed there as being part of what they got in the past, so they got that?
They did.
Okay. Because if, now, I know for my tax collector, she's at the township building, so I would guess that she's using, you know, what they have there for what she's doing, but I don't know for sure. And not, I would say, I wasn't going to go for the stipend, because I felt like it wasn't necessary, but if they, if they're already getting 500, I would keep it at 500, though.
Dieroff makes a motion.
Yes.
Mrs. Kratz?
Yes.
Ms. Nyman?
Yes.
Mrs. Scott?
No.
Mr. Brad Updegrove?
Yes.
Mr. Roger Updegrove?
Yes.
Mr. Zawada?
Yes.
Mr. Brophy?
Yes.
Mr. Panarelo?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Takes us down to our 2025 Fall Athletic Bids. This is an annual bid process for equipment, and uniforms, and all such things as part of our athletic teams. These are the bids, prices as have come back per both the vendor and per, or per the department bid awards inside of the Athletics Department.
So, honor moves.
This on the state bid, Ms. D'Ancola?
Excuse me?
Are these on this, I think it's called the state bid?
On the state bid, no. We actually advertised and went out to bid for all responses.
Does the state bid have it?
It does have some things, and I know our Athletic Department evaluates the bids when they come in against that. Oftentimes, when we go out to public bid, we get better pricing than the co-stars bid that's out there.
Okay, so you're checking that?
Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
Ms. Dieroff?
Yes.
Mrs. Kratz?
Yes.
Ms. Nyman?
Yes.
Mrs. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. Brad Updegrove?
Yes.
Mr. Roger Updegrove?
Yes.
Mr. Zawada?
Yes.
Mr. Brophy?
Yes.
Mr. Panarelo?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Takes us down to item E, the annual setting of the district calendar, which was presented at committee meeting this past month. So the administration is seeking approval of the 25-26 school district calendar.
I will be voting no. I have heard from several students who say it's not fair, they like some snow days in Leaving the kids be kids for two, three snow days is not wrong. Having this flex day thing, they're not learning anything. So if we're in the business for education, let's give them a snow day and make that day up. But I will not support a calendar that doesn't have snow days in for the kids.
Ms. Dieroff?
No, I had too many phone calls this year.
Mrs. Kratz?
I'll vote yes, but I would like some input next year from teachers and students about Thanksgiving week. It seems like all those half-days are hard for families. And also, if someone could just make the squares line up, that would help my OCD. Thank you.
Ms. Nyman?
No.
Mrs. Scott?
You know, I know it's difficult to do a school calendar, because I used to have to do them, and they are difficult, but I really struggle with that Thanksgiving week, and our parents struggle a lot. And so I'm going to say no, we can do better.
Mr. Brad Updegrove?
Yes.
Mr. Roger Updegrove?
Yes.
Mr. Zawada?
Yes.
Mr. Brophy?
Yes.
Mr. Panarelo?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Takes us down to item F, School Safety and Security Coordinator, typically known as the SSC role. As required under School Co., which began back in 2018, whenever there's a vacancy for the school safety and security coordinator occurs, the chief school administrator within 30 days needs to fill that vacancy and that appointment. That had been something that was under the purview of a former superintendent. It was temporarily filled by Mr. Hahn.
It's the recommendation of my office that that sits inside of, most notably, the Assistant Superintendent's Office. So I am recommending that for this evening, the board to appoint Mr. Michael Stout as the School Safety and School Security Coordinator, the SSC. It comes with no additional funds, nor any additional pay. He, in that role, has the oversight of school and safety coordinating, and will report out at the end of the year on a number of things, not to mention threat assessments, safe to say, and a number of entities of where we want to improve in the following year. So it's a collective we, when it comes to safety and security. However, back in 2018, Department of Education through PCCD created code in which there must be a named person in this role, and that is the recommendation this evening.
Ms. Dieroff makes a motion. Ms. Dieroff?
Yes.
Mrs. Kratz?
Yes.
Ms. Nyman?
Yes.
Mrs. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. Brad Updegrove?
Yes.
Mr. Roger Updegrove?
Yes.
Mr. Zawada?
Yes.
Mr. Brophy?
Yes.
Mr. Panarelo?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Under item F, or excuse me, under item G, under Personnel, we, the administration is recommending the Personnel Agenda that's listed, and asking for approval of the following Personnel actions, actions that are included inside.
So, honor moves.
I'm becoming very alarmed at teachers or resignations that are going on. We have somebody with 19 years leading us. We have teachers that are retiring, which is okay, but it seems like all of a sudden we're getting an abundance, but I am definitely concerned with the resignations.
Mr. Hahn, you've been doing exit meetings. Are they leaving because of problems here, or are they truthfully just retiring and moving on to a better part of their lives?
I'll speak to Mrs. Nyman's one example. The individual that's leaving after 19 years is leaving for a great opportunity for herself and her family, for some career growth. Obviously, the retirements for professional staff, each one of those professional staff have over 20 years of experience in education at Boyertown. The staff nurse that's on the list, I can't speak in regards to that individual leaving, but it's for a very good cause, it deals with personal situation at home. The custodian that's leaving is relocating back to where they came from. So they're all good reasons that these individuals are leaving the district, and during exit interviews, we do touch on specifics, specific concerns that they have within the district, and none of these individuals are leaving or departing the district because of issues that they have, either with the job here, or with their immediate supervisor.
Yes.
Mrs. Kratz?
Yes.
Ms. Nyman?
Yes.
Mrs. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. Brad Updegrove?
Yes.
Mr. Roger Updegrove?
Yes.
Mr. Zawada?
Yes.
Mr. Brophy?
Yes.
Mr. Panarelo?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Public comment period number two, Suzanne Huntsberger.
I say, after four horrible years of mismanagement of our government, I want to say that there are so many people like myself on Social Security, trying to keep a roof over our heads, food on the table, and gas in the cars. With so many people trying to keep their heads above water, I can't understand...
Excuse me, I'm sorry. Can you pull the mic down?
Oh.
Thank you.
I can't understand why you would want to spend so much money frivolously on the likes of $7 million fake turf field. It is so unnecessary, there's nothing wrong with the grass on the field, and it only benefits a few. This is not the whole school, and never will be. Please stop spending and raising our taxes like it is. Thank you.
Board comment period. Mr. Updegrove?
No comment.
Thank you so much to the students for our gift, that was very nice, that'll go nice on my desk. And thanks for the recognition on behalf of that also. Other than that, I'm very disappointed in last week's presentation, and I guess I'll be making an appointment to meet with Dr. David Heiser and discuss some things.
Thanks to our student board reps for their report, it was very good. Thanks to Aiden and Julia, who have left, for their gifts. I've known Aiden for a while, so it's really special that he was involved in that. And I also just want to say thank you to John Phelan, I just, my boys had him, and there were also, he also inspired students to form a band, which I think is pretty cool, and they're really talented. And also, thank you to Betsy Corcoran, who we taught fifth grade together, a very long time ago, so thank you to them for their service.
I want to encourage our parents, taxpayers, staff, students, and all involved with Boyertown, and living in the district, to please complete the surveys, so that as we begin our strategic planning, we have your voice. Thank you.
Ms. Dieroff?
First of all, I want to apologize for my vote at the last meeting that I was at for the unified track and field from the Special Olympics. I would never vote on anything that affected the kids, especially from the special needs children. However, I inquired for information, I didn't receive the information prior to my vote, and I could recall when we talked about turf, how the Athletic Department told us, "We're not paying to rent turf," and that was not true. So I voted no. So I want to apologize for that, because I want them to have the club. I just want to be informed of what we're paying for and what we're not. But I think Mr. Hahn was kind enough to explain that to me, so thank you for that. The other thing is, I would like information on the planetarium from East, that was quite a few months ago, we talked about that, so I'd like to know where that stands. The things that benefit the kids the most, all the kids, seem to get backtracked, so I wanted to bring that up again. And I'd like to see tutoring as an elective club or something, because I understand we need quite a bit of tutoring, and we're getting it like early in the morning, if that's true. And I think that should be included in the school day at some point, instead of some of the clubs that we're having. Also, we're increasing the custodians' wages, I'd like to see them get training, which they don't. I checked on that. The other thing is, we have committee chairs, but last year, we never had meetings, and I think if you look, we're violating our own policy. Why do we have committee chairs when we have committee of the whole? That was discussed before, but again, this year, we went and did it again. So I'd like to know why, and when those meetings are going to be held, or why we have to have chairs if we're going to have a meeting once a month on various subjects. And I did ask about the calendar being printed out, if, when we have presentations, if we could get a printout before the meeting, have it at our place, that would be, that would be really helpful to a lot of us. Director, you have to go through the Superintendent, how you go about getting that information, and that's some more I'd like. So, as soon as I get direction of how to do it, I will be right on that. And I want to thank the students in the surrounding class for the gifts tonight and for the recognition. Thank you.
I do understand and even support use of general fund dollars to bridge gaps in funding, which is what the general fund's partially there for and why you keep a healthy general fund. So, the use of the dollars, I'm not overly against. However, saying that, I need to also understand if that's going to be a continuation, or we're going to continue to do that each year and bridge gaps, or what the plans are to bring that gap in and not continue to do it each year. The general fund dollars are finite. The tax dollars we can collect are finite. So, we need to be, I believe, more vigilant in how we're going about that. A $4 million gap is kind of high. This is how we got to where we were in 2019, and I don't particularly want to go back there.
If I was just respond, and I think that's a very good point, and I think one of the things this board will need to do during a strategic planning period is figure that out and make some decisions as to a financial plan that overlays on top of the things that you, we, would like to try to get accomplished. Those two things go hand in hand, and that needs to be mapped out. So, I don't, certainly don't argue the point with regard to it, but that needs to be designed, and, you know, how the board wants to replenish certain funds at times can be discussed, and, you know, and there's ways to be able to do those types of things. We need to caution, always need to caution, that we don't want to become an investment bank. That's not, that's not the cause of the district, but, you know.
I agree.
Right.
I also don't want to be closing schools and laying off teachers.
Absolutely.
Because at the same time we're doing this, we're also talking about going to the capital funds for a lot of dollars, and where the capital funds are replenished through our taxation and general fund. So, we're depleting two different funds at the same time, and I hear no plan or no direction from anywhere of how that's going to stop or how it's not going to get worse. And that's, I watched this before. I don't want to watch it again.
Yeah.
That's just my concern.
Understood, and that's where we're going to have to figure it out inside a plan moving forward as to how we're going to do that.
Yeah, but at the same time, I'm watching that, I'm looking at a, at a plan that calls for more and more positions, and I hear board members asking for more and more positions. Each one of those positions is at least $125,000, probably low. So, every time we bring it up, it goes into our basic dollars and basic expenditures. So, that doesn't go away.
You are absolutely correct. There are reoccurring costs that are all attributed to those types of things. So, the balance becomes what type of investment does the district want to make in its educational setting and continuous improvement? How do you balance the funding with regard to that? If we say we just don't want to spend, I'm not sure that we can continue to make, make that continuous improvement. So, where, there has to be a balance line of doing that. Absolutely.
But I'm not hearing that. I'm hearing spend. I haven't heard any discussion.
Well, you, you are hearing spend, you've heard spend over the past week because there's a bit of what we need to do immediately because of what hasn't been done for the last five years. Because we, we have been a collection agency for the last five years. So, now, it's, it's, well, it has. There's been...
About five, little over five years ago, we closed a building and laid off teachers. So, that doesn't make us a collection agency. That's not...
But there's been collections, there's been, there's been lots of collections over...
I'm just saying, if we're going to, if we're going to do the spending, okay, but I'd like to hear what type of plan we have for not going to maximum taxes every year, guarantees, we're not going to cut anything else or have to close another building. I just don't want to get back into that situation. I'm not saying don't. I'm just saying how are we balancing it, and I haven't heard that. I haven't, I haven't, I even haven't heard even the board ask for that. So, that's my concern.
Right.
And that's, that's where I am with it. I'm not criticizing the moves moving forward. I'm just saying, as we move forward, we have to make sure we've covered all our bases, and we can continue to move forward and don't have to take giant step backward two or three years down the road, which I don't want to see this district have to do again. We did that before. Let's not, let's not repeat our mistakes.
Right, and let's be clear, we're not to the max with our tax increases, right? Our adjusted Act I index is a 4.8, right? And we are at 3% right now in terms of what we've, we've attributed that to.
But 3% in the Berks County side is a lot of taxing.
Well...
Maybe, it might not be on the Montgomery County side, but on the Berks County side, that is a high tax dollar.
But let's understand where, where most of your professional contracts are right now. Your contracts are at 3% right now, right? Your largest organization, the Teachers Association, with Step and Column is 3%, right? You have professionals at that, at that movement, as well as your support staff at that movement. So, you're 3% in on contracts to which the board has approved. We're also, at the same time, trying to make continuous improvement on top of the fact that that 3% is already there.
And like I said, I'm okay. It's just that I want to hear how we're not going to push ourselves into a position where we can't do that, and I haven't even heard discussion on that.
Well, you, you got one, one, one finance presentation made to you last week.
Correct.
So, I think there's some opportunity for, for more discussion, and we're looking forward to that.
But I, I think you'd rather hear me bring this issue up now than three and a half months from now, when all of a sudden, out of the blue, I say, "You guys aren't, you guys are just spending without figuring out how we're going to get the money."
Oh.
So, I would rather not do that.
We knew about that prior to presenting last week.
But you don't want to hear it from me three and a half months from now.
Nope.
Which I agree.
Yep.
Just like to thank the students for the gift. Also, thank the students for the special gift and the teachers that helped to do it. It is very much appreciated. Thanks to Leanna and Allison for their report. I also want to bring up and congratulate our boys wrestling and coach achievements this year. Made it to the States and probably had one of our best years ever, as well as a couple of the women wrestlers made it to States. So, they did an excellent job. We were talking, and I would like to see some more research or push forward this rebate program for the seniors, for the ones that qualify, because it is something that I believe is needed. And I'm, would support that 100%. Also, on the treasurer's report, if we could go back to the percentage of tax collection, not just the dollar amount, it sounds, it's easier for us to listen to that, to see if we're going forward or backwards. So, if we could put a percentage on that again. And after last week's meeting, I did talk to Mr. David Heiser, but I think possibly that we should look into, seriously look into whether getting committee and updating our current IT capabilities, as well as our YouTube channel. People can't hear, and, and it's not fair to some of the, the directors that couldn't get through either. So, you know, if that's something we can look at, get some bids, look into the same things. If we want to get a committee together to look into it, I think that's something important. We've been having this for four years, and, you know, we got the new mics, but it didn't seem to help with the other stuff. And, you know, with us doing more meetings, which I think are great, the directors do have, do need to be included in those, and the ones that can't make it is understandable, but they should be able to have a good option that they can go to to be included. So, thanks again. And again, thank you to the, to the students for the gift. It's very much appreciated.
I want to thank the students for their board rep report, the students who gave us the gifts. I can honestly say that I've used every gift we've ever gotten. I plan on using this one. They've all been invaluable, especially the, the one that held, I guess, last year, was it? The one that we got that held the, yeah, it was perfect. So, I appreciate that and the recognition. To answer Mr. Brophy, I always understood it, and maybe, maybe I take things for granted that they're not explained well enough, or I don't explain it. The, that whole strategic planning thing is where we're going to, everyone's going to be giving your two cents and getting what you want out of it and looking for that extra stuff. And we've never done a special meeting for Ms. Dieroff. That special meeting was kind of our essentially committee meeting without calling it a committee meeting because we're Committee of the Whole. So, hopefully, at the next facilities meeting, everyone could be there and everyone could give their, their two cents.
But Committee of the Whole doesn't have chairs.
Well, we're not doing that at the Committee of the Whole. We're doing it at these special meetings that everyone's invited to and that everyone can speak at because it's a special meeting, not a committee meeting.
Also, we're going to, the, the facilities is also a policy meeting, and that's where we're looking into changing what your concerns are, and that exact thing is getting, you know, getting us more to conform the way that we're going to be doing, like having the finance meeting, having the policy meeting. I don't think necessarily that, I agree with, I mean, I agree with you that, what's the name?
It's in our policy, so we're violating our policy. Really?
Well, that's why we're trying to, we're going to update it. We're trying, we're trying to go one...
You were told last year it was wrong.
What's in our policy? Maybe I didn't understand it.
Talk to the supervisor. You brought it out last year already. I don't have policies in front of me.
I, I think there is a distinction between how does a committee work in the context of a Committee of the Whole process? And I do believe that there is a disconnect between if you're acting as a Committee of the Whole, why do you need individual committee individuals, or are they functioning as a liaison on that particular issue when you have a Committee of the Whole meeting? I think that needs to be vetted more clearly in our policies.
That's how I understand it, as you're basically a liaison, setting that agenda for what is now going to be special meetings. But is that something that needs to be discussed at the policy meeting to hammer through this, or?
I, I really think it's, it's obviously an issue because you have at least one board member, maybe more, who have asked that question. I think clarifying how your committee appointees work in relationship to a Committee of the Whole process, I think it should be clarified in Policy 006.
Well, then, we'll discuss it at the policy special meeting. All right.
Maybe you can review it and make your suggestions.
Well, I think we need to get feedback. We've looked at it. I think before we write it, I think there should be a discussion of the board, how you would like to see it operate, and how you want to perceive the roles of the committee chairs, liaisons, and whatever. What role do they play in the process? That question has been previously asked at a board level, and I don't know if that has been fully vetted. I think the thought process was that they developed the agenda, but did they develop the agenda of the Committee of the Whole or of a separate committee and the like? I think you should talk it through. We can work out the language to fulfill whatever you want, but I think you should talk through what you want first. It's not up for me to dictate that to you. Because I'm, I'll be honest with you, I'm not sure of what the role is.
Okay, well, February 18th, we have that scheduled to speak about.
Can I ask about the strategic planning? You were told leadership, to appoint leadership. I don't know how... Sorry. I don't know how it was worded, that we could appoint somebody to the committee? Or turn, not appoint, I'm sorry, turn the names in? And I haven't heard anything from you. Are we supposed to do, contact you, Dr. David Heiser, each one of us on our own?
I haven't spoken with Dr. David Heiser.
So, my, my communication to the board was, was clear, and that you needed to bring to, to me a, an organized, an organized list of recommended folks. We are seeking approximately 20 representatives of households that don't have students that can be part of the larger steering committee.
Wasn't clear to me. I thought it said leadership. Sorry.
It said both leadership and board.
So, each individual, one of us, you weren't bothering you? You want us to give you the names? Not a...
I'm asking the board, to which I am a member of, to submit suggested and recommended names to me and to which we can select, hopefully, pull together 20 individuals that would care to serve on a steering committee over the next five months.
So, you just want a name and phone number, a name and address? What do you want?
Name, email, phone number would be helpful.
Okay. Thank you. The 31st, this Friday.
Need the address also to verify they're in the district.
He said the name and address.
Wouldn't you have to include the address also so they can be verified that they're in the district?
Well, I wasn't going to go to the lengths in regards to that. I assume that the people you were recommending, you as an individual, vetted them, understood them to be living inside the district, and you recommended them to be a partner with us as a school district since they lived inside the district. I don't think you would recommend somebody that you didn't know, that didn't live inside the school district.
I never assume anything.
Well, I, I left it to you to use your judgment with regard to that. We're not going to be mailing them anything. We'll be contacting them via phone or email to be able to inquire as to whether they, their status.
Just for consistency, if somebody wants to speak at the board meetings, they have to, if somebody wants to speak at the board meeting, you have to, you have to be able to verify they're here.
Yeah, that's a...
I would think you want somebody on servant committee. You should keep the same consistent rules.
Well...
It's up to you.
And respectfully, I, I understand this is a public legislative meeting. The steering committee of the strategic planning is not, and therefore, I'm really asking for you to use your, your judgment as a board member to make those suggestions to me and recommendations to me. So, we have upcoming meeting dates on the 11th. That will be a Committee of the Whole at Colbertdale, and the 18th will be another special meeting. We'll be involving both policy and facilities at that meeting. That will be detailed. We will have presentations from Dewey Engineering in regards to both our field and regards to Boyer Town Elementary School. That will start at 6 o'clock. That is here in the Education Center.
Motion to adjourn.
Yeah, I can move.
May adjourn.